This is the Wycomico County Council meeting, April 1st, 2014.
The motion is seven. We begin each meeting with a lower prayer and a pledge of allegiance for those who care to join us.
My Father,
O Lord in heaven, thou wilt be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily reward, and give us this reward as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not to temptation, but to the people of evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the glory, and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda tonight, we have approval of two sets of minutes. We have a motion to introduce minutes from March 18th, 2014. Is there any discussion on these minutes?
Just, I will not be voting on any of the minutes from March 18th because I was not here for that day.
Any other discussion? Seeing none on favor of approval of the minutes from March 18th, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Next we have approval of the open work session minutes from March 18th, 2014. We have a motion to introduce those minutes.
So moved second.
Is there any discussion on these?
Mr. President, I will not be voting on these because I don't believe in it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none on favor of approval of the open work session minutes from March 18th, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Ms. Creamer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members will recall that the last meeting, Legislative Bill 2014-4, proposing to modify development impact fees, was tabled. It was tabled till to this evening. We are advised that Mr. Strausberg is prepared to continue the dialogue with the Council from last year, or from last meeting, if you care to take the issue off the table.
I'll make a motion to take the issue off the table.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm all in favor of keeping going with it. Personally, if we start it, it's something, let's go ahead and finish it up, wrap it up. If we want to discuss it.
So in other words, we're not going to discuss it anymore, is that right?
No, this is to take it off the table, so that if you choose, the discussion can resume.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Oh, okay, in that case, yeah, we'll discuss it.
That's what taking it off the table means.
Oh, you tabled it.
It was tabled, and we're taking it.
It was tabled, okay.
Now, now the question is, would the Council like to have that discussion resume now, or would you like to have it?
Do we need to vote on this? Okay, so we had a motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Would you like to have that discussion now, or after the items are on printed agenda?
After the printed agenda.
After the printed agenda, thank you very much. I'm remiss for not saying good evening, Mr. President, members of the Council, and ladies and gentlemen. The next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 29, 2014. It's adopting the Wycomico County Assets Audit Report, and the county internal auditor Steve Roser is here for presentation.
Well, Steve's coming up. We have a motion to introduce Resolution 29-2014.
Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Steve Roser, and I am your internal auditor. The Office of the Internal Auditor performed an audit of the county's tangible fixed assets. The scope of the audit was subsequently expanded to include real property assets. We looked at internal control over assets and found them to be satisfactory. There are two basic types of reporting. First are the book, depreciable assets greater than $5,000. Discovery sampling did not reveal any material problems in this category. The second category is trapped assets less than $5,000. Testing revealed that this category might need some work. And as in most cases, any new initiative should pass cost benefit considerations. For real assets, we found that courthouse records match county books, and this exercise also included other projects. We performed a lease or buy evaluation for public works. We learned that it is more economical to buy large equipment placed in service 10 years or more. We also performed a vehicle or equipment evaluation tool for management. The audit report contains more information and will be placed on the county website as approved. The committee now would like to thank the executive of the county council, and all departments for their robust assistance with this project. Respectfully submitted, Steve Roser, CPA. And I'll be glad to address any other questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Roser?
I just have a quick question, and I, you know, since I wasn't here last time, I'm still trying to catch up on things. But you mentioned real property in here. Since we were looking for a location for the Board of Elections, does the county have any office space or any space that is non-occupied, that could have been used?
Um, I really
I shouldn't ask you that question, but that was kind of my question.
Based on the testing we performed, what we did was, we went to the courthouse and, and secured a list of county properties that the county courthouse has listed in the name of Wycomico County, and compared the books and finance that we have on the balance sheet in the name of Wycomico County, and, and put the two together. We did no evaluation of any of the properties, but we could certainly take a look if you'd like us to.
That was just one of my questions, I don't know if that was brought up at the last work session or not.
Mr. Roser, can you repeat what you said about leases 10 years or more, and it's better to?
It's better to purchase economically than to lease a vehicle, piece of equipment. We tested one particular piece of equipment, it was in front of the board. And, as you know, when you lease equipment, a lot of the cost and maintaining that equipment is included in the lease, so we took variables like that and some others, crunched the numbers all together in a, in sort of a spreadsheet tool that management can use. And we determined that most of this equipment we do use 10 years or more. That's, that's usually how far a piece of equipment like that would go before an overhaul. And it's cheaper for the county to, to buy it outright than to enter in a lease agreement, at least in the one we tested.
Thank you.
How does that suit towards lands and buildings and offices, that type of thing?
Not at all. We didn't test any of that.
You did not test any of that, so?
No, sir, it was just equipment.
Any other questions? Okay, we've had a motion in the second. All in favor of Resolution 29-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Thank you.
Next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 1, Number 30, 2014, at the request of the county executive. Propose a service charge on semi-annual installment payments with property tax in the amount of 0.02 percent for the fiscal year 2015. And county finance director, Mr. Mackler is present. If you have any questions as to his recommendation.
We have a motion to introduce Resolution 30-2014. Anybody have any questions about this?
Uh, yes, what is it currently?
It's 0.04, I believe.
And if we do adopt this, it looks like it would be 10 cents for each $500.
That's rough. So it's actually being lowered?
Any member, finance director?
The, the interest rate is designed to recover the value of lost revenue forgone between the 1 October and 30 December, which is the period of the second semi-annual payment. Most people today are entitled to make two payments on their, a little property taxes, the first one being due on the 1st of July payable with that discount through 30 September, and the second semi-annual being due 31 December. And so the interest is then applied to the, just the value of that second semi-annual. And the computation requires us to look at the interest rate that we earn on all of our other funds, which are held by the MLGIP, the Maryland Local Government Investment Pool. That interest rate went down through this period, through this computation, essentially at half from last year. So that's why it's essentially lower by half for the interest rate that we can and that's why So it went down, and we're saving money for the people who are, people who pay, who are paying a lower fee, lower fee. It's not very often we hear anything going down, so that's good.
On the income side, it's not unusual these days.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. We've had a motion in the second. All in favor of Resolution 30-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 31, 2014, at the request of the county executive, confirming the reappointment of William Turner to the Board of Appeals.
We have a motion to introduce Resolution 31-2014.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this?
No, except that Mr. Turner is here, so I want to say thank you to him for letting me do this again.
We've had a motion in the second. All in favor of Resolution 31-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 32, 2014, at the request of the executive, confirming the reappointment of Gary Boggs to the Board of Appeals.
We have a motion to introduce Resolution 32-2014.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor of Resolution 32-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Resolution Number 33, 2014, approves the bylaws of the School Building Commission. The School Building Commission put forth a recommendation to restructure the membership of the board for the purpose of leveling out the representation of, by the executive branch and the legislative branch, to be one person from each, and to have a person from the Board of Education and the super, and a person from the superintendent's office, with five members representing the public, preferably with subject matter expertise in the area of construction.
We have a motion to introduce Resolution 33-2014. Is there any discussion on this?
Just a quick question, now, will we be seeing some new appointments coming up shortly from this commission? Since it says, what, one council member now? What do we have, like, one or two? We currently have two, so that won't, won't come off, so I guess we'll have to decide who would like to step down.
Those will be coming from the executive office when they do.
Okay, but then, what they're going to do, it looks like the School Building Commission will recommend names of the committee or commission, and go to the county executive office,
That's the way that
and then come to the council, right? That's
That's correct.
I mean, between the council members, we're going to have to decide which council member would prefer to take a vacation in the School Building Commission.
Okay, any other questions, discussion on this? We've had a motion in the second. All in favor of Resolution 33-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
And then, the next item for your, for your receipt, not presentation, or consideration at this time, but for you to receive, is the proposed FOP agreement. The council will have an open work session on it at your next session, at your next meeting. The council receives it tonight in order to be in compliance with provision of the charter. And Mr. Strausberg, will you be giving that to the council, or someone else?
I'll make this very, very short for you. Pursuant to the Wycomico County Code Section 5910, the executive office is presenting the collective bargain between the negotiating of the FOP, including a legislative request for the approval of any provisions of the agreement that are in conflict with the current county law, and funding necessary to implement the agreement. We are happy to meet with council on any work sessions you may schedule in the future to review the agreement. Present it to the President. Thank you, thank you.
May I ask a question before Mr. Strausberg, please? We're going to have a work session this on April 15th.
Yes, ma'am.
We get our budget from the executive's office on April 15th. I'm assuming we get it on that date. So, any, I'm going to say, funding requests from the FOP, will those be incorporated into that budget that we received already? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And as the council moved earlier this evening, we chose to reopen the discussion of the Legislative Bill 2014, Number 4, Development Impact Fees. Perhaps you'd like to invite Mr. Strausberg back to the table.
We've got five minutes until our, until we can do our public hearing, so.
Would you like to start? What we came up with? To see, of course. Well, where we, where, where we had left at the last time, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Councilman Culver had suggested that when he spoke with a number of local builders, that they had indicated that a, a deduction in the, in the fee to that was as levy for apartment complexes would spur development of single-family homes right now. So, we, I did some calculations on that. The difference is $3,700. And if, if you, if you made an assumption that by giving developers who bought a single-family residence to the occupancy permit stage, if the county gave them a grant for the difference, $3,700, if we could get 25 starts, that would amount to about $94,000, $95,000 in 2015. And so, my, my, my thinking right now is that, we've talked a lot about economic development, we've talked about putting additional funding into the budget for economic development, and I'm thinking that perhaps what we should do is create a fund for that purpose, and, and part of the, of the use of that fund would be to grant, under the correct circumstances, relief under that impact fee for single-family homes in 2015. And we're prepared to put that into the budget for 2015 for council consideration. In speaking with Councilman Culver, I think, and I don't want to speak for you, but I think you felt that that would be an appropriate stimulus.
Well, after our meeting last week, I took it back to four different builders, and they all said that was great. They said they would be willing to go ahead and try to get a couple more starts going here, and I told them it's going to be limited to the first 20 to 25, whatever you came up with as far as the numbers. And they were very enthusiastic about that. So I, I got word from at least three builders that they're willing to start two or three homes in Wycomico County very shortly.
So basically, what we're doing is taking a grant and replacing part of the impact fee, and that money goes to the Board of Education. That's what, that's, that's where that money goes. Well, yeah, I'll let it, what, what we were trying to do, we were trying to, to avoid having, having a difference in the impact fee that we could not justify, but understanding that single-family development right now is just, is just not happening, and we were trying to stimulate it. We felt that it would be inappropriate use of county funds to offer grants for starts of that nature.
So Wayne, how much do you think this is going to stimulate the economy?
We'll have to wait and see. If we look at it for, I mean, my thought was, if we embed this in the budget, we could look, we could see what happens in terms of stimulus over the course of 2015, and if it works, we could consider doing it again in 2016. If we see that it doesn't really have any effect, well, then at least we've given it, we've given that stimulus a chance, we've given some means of, of spurring that development, putting some people back to work who aren't at work right now.
And I'm very supportive of stimulating the economy, but, you know, I have to question, you know, how much this is going to have an effect. And the other question, this way, Mr. Baker, and it goes to Mr. Baker, Mr. Baker, this way, does it meet the constitutional test?
Yes, that's what I was going to say, based on what Mr. Lennox presented and our research, this is a much cleaner way of moving funds that offset the impact fee, the development change in the impact fee ordinance, so we don't have any question or challenge based on treating different companies differently. Because I think the law is pretty well established that we can give money for economic development.
Well, are we going, are we going to get in muddy waters when we set up the criteria boards?
I wouldn't think so. I think you could probably use the same criteria we use for granting the, for charging the impact fee. But in other words, if you have, if you have an impact fee on the residents, and that's, those are the people that would qualify after the grant.
Well, no, what I mean is, Wayne, unless I misunderstood you, Wayne, you said that a fund was going to be, you know, developed here, and the grant would, would be given under certain criteria.
Yes.
What is that criteria?
I don't have that criteria right now, we'll have to
And that's the muddy waters I'm talking about.
We'll have to work through that as we go through the budget process. I don't have that answer for you right now. I haven't had the time to really, really parse that with council. But I think during the budget process, we could do that.
But we're speaking of basically a single-family home built in Wycomico County is the major part of the criteria.
And bought through a CO.
Right.
Bought through a CO stage.
I think the approach and the, the thought process behind it is very good. I do have to agree with the fact that I'm concerned about the criteria. Would there be a maximum, and I know you haven't thought this through, but I'm just thinking, is there going to be a maximum number of single homes that could be developed by one particular developer? Because, I mean, if you go into, say, this one particular, the first 20, that one developer gets the 20, I don't know if, it, it meets the criteria of us trying to stimulate the economy, but I feel like, you know, if we're going to do that, we need to be fair and make sure we spread the wealth, if you will, to ensure that everybody who is our
I think there's details that, that then in a work session, we should walk through and see whether we can all be comfortable with those details. But I understand that, and I agree.
Mr. President, for, for clarification, in, in support of Mr. Holloway, Joe Holloway's observation, that what, what really this amounts to is, is putting money in the general fund and moving it from within the general fund over to a, a grant. And as you said, it's, the impact fee by its legislation, authorizing legislation, is used only in support of education.
Yeah, and that's
But in the past, and that's, that's what I want to clarify for you, the money does not go to the Board of Education itself. Impact fee money has been used to pay debt service on existing outstanding bonds that the county has sold, actions all taken by the county council, so the, so
So it is on the Board of Ed bonds?
Yes, it is, it is only for school projects, but the Board of Ed, the money doesn't actually go to the board. It supplants, it supplants other monies which the county would, would have to otherwise appropriate for educational purposes. And secondly, but you wanted to, you, you wanted to say something, I, I'll, this is, this is the same subject, but a different part of it.
I say, go ahead.
All right, thank you. If, if this proceeds forward and, and the, the criteria have not been worked out, would it be, I'm getting the cart and the horse, and I'm questioning which is which, would it be appropriate to finalize this, this ordinance after you've been through the budget process, so you'd know exactly what all the, what all the answers are, or adopt it and then figure out the details as part of the budget process? That's just a question.
Well, not, not, because the, this is substantially different from the one that's on the table. If the council declined to go to this route, then my recommendation is just let the ordinance die. Because what we're proposing, what the executive is proposing doesn't require an extension, it's just legislative. And then if you choose to revisit, an actual change to the impact fee would just bring back another ordinance.
So, so working out the details through the budget process would be, are you saying that would be the appropriate next step?
That would be correct.
Would you not do both ordinances, and the, the one ordinance only apply to single-family, the one that's currently in front of us, does that only apply to single-family? And that was for a payment?
No, that was just that they had a funding to make.
So if we went this route, that really wouldn't apply for one year?
For one year.
But
Then we'd revisit.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think if we're going to make that drastic a change, we probably need to let this die. I guess another question would be, though, if we're making that kind of change, even though it's a change basically in the budget, shouldn't we have some sort of resolution or record of it for
Well, once you've worked on
versus, okay. It's that legislability resolution.
We should have some kind of resolution, so you're fortunate, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
So does that seem to be the consensus, to let this, this one die and work on it in the budget? And then come back and
You know, my first thoughts was, when we were going to try to do something about the impact fee, was try to reduce it, make it more, to try to stimulate the economy. I didn't know we were going to, and I guess no matter how you do it, it's going to more or less go back on the backs of the taxpayers.
It's the only place we can get our money.
Otherwise, no matter how we did it.
That's right.
You know, so, how do you do it? But, I think we need to let it die and work on it in the budget.
Well, and I would like to see more details, the criteria, the expectation, assumption of how much it is going to stimulate the economy, how many homes. And where did the 20 come from, that the first 20 would get this?
It was just a number.
Yeah, we just talked about $100,000, basically, going toward
Yeah, I was looking at $100,000, Stevie, and I was also looking at the marketplace and saying, in, in, in the marketplace, how many starts can you reasonably think you could stimulate?
Well, and then my question would be, if it are, if it is 20 homes, how much does that stimulate the economy in Wycomico County?
Well, the average price home is $150,000. The, you can figure out the taxes from there. Each, each crew will have roughly 20 employees working on the house through different, different subs, and there's usually at least four or five different major subs coming in on building a house, from masonry all the way to fencing.
Yeah, I think the other thing we could look at, and I can do the math, is, is they look at the fact that you're also increasing the tax base at that point in time, and how quickly would you be, be repaid that grant in probably two years? If you have the grant repaid. So we need an economic impact.
But that, wouldn't that
We need a digression in this. A digression analysis.
I don't think the audience understands that.
We can come back with, I mean, we can come back with those kinds of details. I mean, frankly, you know, off the top of my head, I thought the process for granting, for making these grants, I think the, I think the applications ought to come through the normal process through the executive, to the council to approve. We can collectively establish what it is we will see, and, and, and at the executive office, through planning and zoning, gets an application. You vet that application, if it meets the criteria, then you bring it over to the council, and council has the right to, to vet it again, and to basically then sanction that appropriation again, if you will. I think, I think it should be collaborative. I'm, I'm not, I'm not at all comfortable with us just putting $100,000 out there and saying, okay, have that. I think this is new territory, and we should be working on this pretty closely together if we go through this first year.
Well, and, and I'm going to articulate this again, and I've said it every time we've talked about the impact fee. I think we are going down a slippery slope here. Like I said, I'm all for stimulating the economy, but I don't know if this is the way to go. And I think it's a slippery slope, and, you know, we're talking about way to go, and I think it's a slippery slope when, you know, we're talking about the impact fee. And some of us were on the council when that was implemented, and, you know, there is always going to be a need for the Board of Ed to borrow money to improve the schools, and if it doesn't come from the impact fee, those creating the need, then it's going to come out of the general fund for us to pay back the bonds.
There's certainly no chance to get the grants from state or the federal, but it's not maybe-
You know, I-
Is there anything out there that-
You know, I think I, I haven't had the time to look at that deal, but I can follow it, and that's a good idea. We can go to deep end and see what is anything like this where we could get, you know, where, where we could get matching funding through some source.
That I would be, Baker.
President?
Yes.
The impact fee is, as you are all aware, was based on a study done by a consultant, and I believe the recommendations of that consultant were that the fee be reevaluated occasionally or on a, on a basis. I don't believe it's been reevaluated at all since the impact fee was passed. Certainly, the economy is much different than it was when the fee was first enacted. Would it be in order during the next budget year to make provisions in the budget for there to be a competent reevaluation of the impact fee? And that in itself may accomplish what I think all of you are, are interested in having so far as the fee itself is concerned.
But didn't Mr. Baker say that we can't have the same fee for both the multifamily and the single family?
Yeah.
So it's got to be two different fees. I mean, we're talking about either reducing all of them.
Well, that's, that's what a, that's what a reevaluation of the, of the fee would do, based on current economic conditions. I, I don't know what Tishner, it's a very complicated process, I do know that. I don't know just exactly how the consultant did it. I'm suggesting that it might be time to do it again.
Mr. Kramer, I respect your suggestion, and we may not want the result that we get, though. And I'm saying that because when Tishler and Associates did it, we really came in on the very low end of what impact-
It could have been.
Yeah, could have been. So we may not get the results we're looking for there.
At least we know.
We would know.
Well, my personal feeling is I'd still like to see a moratorium for a year or two years on all impact fees, based on the fact that we lost 4,500 jobs during the downswing of the economy. As I said last week, Fruitland has removed their impact fee. So the other workplaces and other towns are seeing the impact of, of what construction, new home construction says for a community, as well as our own sweat. Salisbury-Waukesha Economic Development, Dave Rong, can tell you the first thing that will stimulate an economy is single-family residential home building. And I would be more than happy to have him come in here and tell us all of that. But that's, that is one of the main stimulus for any economy, based on the trickle-down effect from everything, from carpet sales to appliance sales to paint sales. So there's a lot of people affected in, in the single-family housing.
Wayne, I think it was, the revenue estimated for 2015 was $780,000. Was that ever broken out to single-family?
It is.
It is? What, what is that figure?
It's about two-thirds apartments, one-third of family, roughly. Majority of the impact fee right now is coming from multi-unit.
And you're not predicting that for next year? You don't see the multi-
No, I think that the planning and zoning, it has predicted a change in the mix between a single-family moving more towards multifamily away from a single-family. That's how the long-term projection looks.
God, I want to applaud Wayne and the executive's office for coming up with this. I think it's a great idea to stimulate the economy. Granted, we're still giving it to the Board of Education, but we see what it will do. I mean, one year or 20 houses, that's all we're talking about stimulating, and just see what will that $100,000 do? What will that 20 houses build?
I mean, we'll give it a try. The way I look at it is, worst-case scenario, it does nothing, and we still have that money sitting in this fund. Best-case scenario, we go through all that money, yet we have stimulated jobs and we build our base from those new houses.
And I agree with Shereen, that's a point I had not thought about was, let's just say a big company comes in from anywhere, and all of a sudden wants to do a whole subdivision, and they take the first 20, 25 homes. And I, I agree with you there, that should be somehow or another feathered out to we, five per house, to the CEOs are collecting something like that. And I, I think that's a good point.
Let's, let's come up with some ideas collectively, and do the executive work session during budget time, and see if we can hammer around the details. Does that sound good?
Do we, do you have consensus about this bill, Mr. Baker? Or just, just don't do anything at all on it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. That was longer than five minutes, so we're good.
We'll try to make it up. The next item on your agenda is a public hearing on Residence thirty-four, twenty-fourteen. I have to read the end, and you can introduce it for public hearing. In case a public hearing would be held this evening for an amendment to the Waukesha County Ward and Sewer Plan, city approval in Waukesha County requesting an amendment to the Waukesha County Ward and Sewer Plan, chapter three entitled Water, specifically Table eight, entitled Immediate Five and Ten Year Priorities for Water Development and Order Map ten, to include a water distribution system, including a water, excuse me, water storage tank to serve the Marsh Mill area. In the Marsh Mill service area, we move from a W six new plan service to a W two planned service category, and it's estimated to provide 60,250 gallons per day, with a peak flow of 136,500. So we want to address those questions in the public hearing.
I have a motion to introduce Resolution thirty-four dash two thousand fourteen.
Sure, Mr. President.
This is a public hearing, so if anybody has any comments on Resolution thirty-four dash two thousand fourteen, now's the time. Okay. Any council comments?
I just have a question. On the report from the Department of Public Works down to the, where it says design information, it talks about a 14-inch HDPE, and I don't see that listed in the project summary. And then my other question is, it's got a 12-inch water main loop, but it's only extended for 8,398 feet, which is about a mile and a half. Is that, is that correct? I thought the loop, 12-inch loop had to go to the whole loop, the drainage pipe.
I'm sorry, where did you see the 14-inch?
On the design information. Okay, it says down to identify proposed water service sizes, length and locations of each. It's about most to the bottom of the page.
I see the 12-inch section, but I don't see-
That's only about a mile and a half, but I thought 12 inches was the whole loop. And then they were going to be good.
This was done in very early design stages, and we were probably still working on the flow characteristics of the area. So now that we've done the modeling, and we're in, in our construction document phase, we've certainly isolated and determined what size mains we're going to have, and it looks to be a 12-inch main for the entire section.
Okay. What is, what's a 14-inch HDPE?
It's just high-density polyethylene. It's just a type of material that we use for water main construction.
Does that have something to do with water chemistry?
Uh, no, no, ma'am. It really just is the fact that a lot of this is going to be done with what's called a directional drill, so the pipes actually fuse together, and they use a material called HDPE for the pipe interior.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. We've had a motion and a second on favor of Resolution thirty-four dash two thousand fourteen. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think the president's both sides.
The next item is going to be a public hearing on Resolution thirty-five, twenty-fourteen. Notice of giving compliance with chapter twenty-two of the Waukesha County Code in a local government article, section ten dash three twelve, the county council will hear comments on a resolution to relocate a forest conservation easement, property that's Christopher and Sherri Hall. They are removing approximately 3,680 square feet along the northern side of Kensington And mitigation has been provided at a ratio of two to one in accordance with the Waukesha County Code to secure 73,600 square feet on-site. The company with a recommendation to staff the planning and zoning commission.
Okay. I have a motion to introduce Resolution thirty-five dash two thousand fourteen.
So move.
Second.
Okay. And this is a public hearing, so if anybody has any comments on this?
Mr. President, in the interest of full disclosure, you may notice that the property immediately adjacent to Mr. and Mrs. Hall is where the Creamers live, and we're fully supportive of what they wish to do.
Thank you.
I think that answers a question for a minute, right?
All right. Any other public comments? All right. Any council comments, questions?
I have something that was brought up to me. The conservation easement is a two-to-one ratio. Mr. Baker, is this a county code that it's on a two-to-one basis? Why wouldn't it be exchanged one-to-one?
Relocation of the easements is normally treated as an extraordinary event, and so the county requested that we replace the two-to-one. But it's established to the code.
See that in a lot of mitigation on the Perpares Commission as well, of increased rate.
Well, it was a critical area, we would think, but if we're trading apples for apples, well, that's what we're trading, basically, isn't it?
Mr. President, Mr. Hall raises a question of interest, and Mrs. Barkovich and I happened to be having a casual conversation about that before the meeting, and she suggested that after the comprehensive plan is approved, our whole section of the code that deals with the comprehensive plan will be under review, and this might be a time to consider that then, isn't it? Did I state that fairly?
That's what I was thinking. The other thing, now on the planning commission, it used to be, years, years ago, that forest conservation was actually established indeed on the lots. Now that is discouraged, so that when we see site plans, there's no longer some forest conservation on a building lot.
Which one question?
Till later, Dick.
Um, Mr. Baker, I guess the other thing, if, if there was a situation where they couldn't do a two-to-one due to the size of the land, could there be an exception be made?
Oh, they can, I'll pay for offsite. They can either go to a bank offsite, or they can, they pay. Couple of options.
Anything else? Okay. We've had a motion and a second on favor of Resolution thirty-five dash two thousand fourteen. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think the president's both sides.
Excuse me, the last public hearing for consideration is on Resolution thirty-six, twenty-fourteen. It's an act, notice was given in compliance with chapter twenty-two, game number twenty-five A seventy-five. The council will hear comments on proposal to lease the ES Actuums LLC. The office space known as eight oh three North Salisbury Boulevard, suite 2100 and 2200, containing 7,798 square feet, to be leased for a term of 120 months, commencing in August the first, 2014, ending July 31st, 2012, monthly rental of 5,166, and common area maintenance fee of 1274.
Okay. I can have a motion to introduce Resolution thirty-six dash two thousand fourteen.
Second.
This is a public hearing?
Before you start the public hearing, I trust that, and I'm sure Mr. Kramer passed out, in the last couple, last couple of days, there's been a number of, couple of questions about the lease, and we did some modifications today. The first, we had a non-appropriation fee in there, and your exhibit A one-
Mr. Baker, we thought you were going to bring them, the amendments, so-
Okay.
Do I need to ask for that motion again, as I mentioned?
If you, if you decide to consider the amendments, then you can consider the amendments and then amend the bill if you choose.
May I? Public hearing is totally over.
Okay.
On paper, I just passed out on page two, the non-appropriation clause, the non-appropriation clause, essentially you put in there, since this is a state agency, not a county, and you know from your private work session that the state has certain requirements for that space, and of course, the state is going to be able to change those requirements at any point in time. So the lease is originally drafted, said that essentially if they change the, the requirements such that the property that is currently being considered doesn't satisfy the requirements, they could terminate the lease. The request was made, and it's a reasonable one, is that if they do that, then the landlord will have an opportunity to conform the space to meet state requirements, and then if he can't, we terminate. The other change is on page six, paragraph nineteen, entered by landlord. I've been in consultation with the Attorney Board of Elections, and there was some concern about the access to, due to the landlord. That has been eliminated, and we've replaced it with the same provision that's in our existing lease. Essentially, landlord doesn't have access to the property, except for a normal business hours and company of a member of the Board of Elections staff, and no access after hours.
So in other words, landlord does not have a key now, we just see who's going to get a key.
Yeah, I believe there's some changes, free of attention, outside of public hearing. If there's anything else, please refer back.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing, so if anyone has any comments, now's the time.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Geteras. I'm a resident of Waukesha County. I am the election director for Waukesha County. Mr. President and members of the council, I would ask your indulgence for just a minute. Whenever I have the opportunity to address the public, I like to remind voters of Waukesha County of important election dates. Our staff has been diligently preparing for months now for the upcoming June 24th gubernatorial primary election. All eligible Democratic and Republican voters in Waukesha County are encouraged to participate. The deadline for new voters to register or for registered voters to update their information with us is Tuesday, June 3rd, but we highly recommend not waiting until the last minute. Now would be a very good time to contact us for that. And early voting for the primary will be held again at the Waukesha County Youth and Civic Center, beginning Thursday, June 12th, and continuing through Thursday, June 19th. The hours will be 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for all eight days of early voting, and this information can be found on the new county website. Regarding our current office location on Batlin Street, I'd like to publicly thank Bob and Barbara Canbarn, who have graciously provided us a home away from home for 10 years now. And unfortunately, with the addition of electronic voter check-in equipment, the need for more seasonal staff, who now play a very vital role for us, helping us to process the growing amount of work that we're required to be done while meeting mandatory statutory deadlines, as well as the proposed new paper-based voting system to be deployed in 2016, it requires us to request a temperature and humidity-controlled environment, office and warehouse space with more square footage than we have now. And now with regards to the proposed new location. The Maryland Deputy State Election Administrator called me a few weeks ago and asked me for my assessment of the functionality of the proposed building to allow us to conduct our work. In a word, yes, with a few modifications, I believe this building should be suitable to meet our operational needs, and the landlord has already indicated he's very willing to work with us to accommodate our needs. I brought copies with me of my written response to Ms. Charleston, and I'd be glad to leave them with Mr. Kramer if the council wishes. Thank you very much for your time regarding this matter.
Thank you, Holloway. Can I ask the director a question?
Sure.
You said the building suitable. Was there anything said about the area, the neighborhood? Was that, was that, any comments made about that, or was it just the building?
I've been able to do three walkthroughs with the landlord and the realtor and members of my staff and the board now. And so, no, at that time, we were talking about the square footage, the temperature control, et cetera, just the, the functionality of the building.
Okay. In the response from the state election board, I'm going to read this, security internal, internal system of security cameras installed, we would also hire security guards as part of our- We would also hire security guards as part of our operations budget when staff and/or voters are required to be in the office in the evenings. Normally, the time period is close to such election, or for such nightly deadlines as candidate filings, close to a registration, et cetera. We would also request a protected front entrance encounter be installed. At this present time, are you required to have security officers in your building?
At our current location, no, we do not have.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Prunell. I'm on the Board of Elections.
Thank you very much.
As this process started almost eighteen months, two years ago, I went to Anthony, and I wanted him to be, us to be proactive, instead of reactive, because the landlord had been gracious to us, but we knew that Salisbury University was buying up everything around us, and that was all thought he would probably, or they would probably, that entity would want our building as well. I wanted us to be past this process so that we would be ready for the two thousand and fourteen election. That has not happened. I will not entertain conversations of attitude or anything else. My song has been the same. Is it secure? Is it adequate? And is it safe? To the, to the secure part, I recognize that other people say that they're not having a problem with that particular location. They may not be in the building that we're going to be in. So we need to talk apples to apples. If you're in a three-story building, it may be much more secure than you being in a flat one-story building, and the access may be different. I also need to entertain the people that says it's safe. What time of work do they work? Are they there in the evening time after dark? Who are the employees that work during the day or work during the night? What is their criteria for the persons that work in those locations? How secure is it for them? Those are the things that I want. Is it adequate? Last Wednesday and Thursday, I attended a state Board of Election meeting. There were two hundred and eighteen people. I only brought one copy of this with me, that you are, would be glad to leave for you. Keith Ross, who works with the election, who is in the process of managing the new machinery that we're going to get, has stated to us that we need more space, probably about three times the space that we have now, because the machines, they don't know what they're going to be. We do know that for every machine that we see that we have, it's going to have to have a printer with that. To that printer, you're going to have to have supplies for the printer, which we don't have now, because we don't have printers now. You're going to have to have paper for the ballots before the process. You're going to have to have storage for the papers after the process, and for the length of time that we need to keep that paper as part of the state policy. Do we have adequate space to accommodate that? Anthony's already entertained that the paper that they use, it has to be temperature-controlled, because if the temperature's not right, the paper will swell and will not go into the machinery. The humidity needs to be correct, because if the humidity is not correct, then the paper ends will curl, and they will not go through that printer material. All of these things that we were talking about beforehand, so that we could get to it. And the last thing is the security of it. Men may not have the same security issues that women have. Youth may not have the same security issues that older people have. We have one of the ladies in our office. If you remember, over a year ago, there was an incident at P R M C, where a lady was in the parking garage, and she was attacked. Attacked securely enough that the person received a ten-year jail sentence. She's one of our employees. She's a valuable asset to us. All I want to see is for us to honestly look at this, do what is necessary, what is right, and what is true. So I will sing my same song for the last time. Is it safe? Is it adequate? And is it secure?
Good evening. Jack Delia, Five Brothers Road, Salisbury. I have a pass out that I had pulled off the county's council's website over the weekend. Take a look, three pages of that, and they deal with the following. One, as I said, it's from your briefing book. Those pages have a couple of the details, rather than the single front page of a fifty-six-hundred-dollar cost plus common charges, common area charges. I extended those numbers on a yearly basis and on a ten-year basis. And that little fifty-six-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, or whatever that number was, comes to eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand over the term of the lease, for which we obviously have the use of a nice facility, but guess what? At the end of ten years, what we have are some canceled rent receipts, and that's it. As a taxpayer, I don't think that's a real good deed. Matter of fact, I think it's a terrible deed. If you take that commercial lease on page one of your brief book, and look at the beginning of fifty-one-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars a month rent, and then a three percent annual increase compounded over ten years, you end up the final year of the ten-year lease with a ninety-nine-thousand-dollar payment. Once again, you'll get a pretty rent receipt, but that's all. At least, I think it's all. So what happens after the ten-year lease is up? We're faced with the same position that you're with today. Are you going to sign another ten-year lease and pay another? At that point, compound, it comes to, instead of an eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-dollar figure, it comes to approximately a million one-fifty for the second ten-year, assuming that inflation doesn't go crazy. So the county would then have, in the twenty-year span, spent approximately two million dollars to run a very nice facility that we desperately need. I would much, much prefer some alternative to that premise. I know that we need, and there is some time, pressure, and constraints on the building that we're in and the new equipment that we have. I did not realize that there was a concern dealt with more than the uncomfortableness of an unair-conditioned building where people are working to, to program and work with the actual voting machines. And in that vein, I was suggesting, unaware of, again, of what you just heard about the humidity, I was suggesting that we explore, or you explore, extending that lease for one year, it's approximately thirty thousand dollars, or if that is unavailable from the, from the landlord, then even a three-year, which is basically, I believe, what is currently been, been in effect, are three-year cycles. So even then, we would have a ninety thousand dollar investment while you had time to develop an alternative site, an alternative answer to this, that the county would end up owning, rather than a bunch of receipts. I am not privy to the decisions and to the numbers that went into the state's Attorney's Building. I am privy to the fact that it's a heck of a nice location, and according to the January expense report in the state's Attorney's Office, we're spending a hundred and forty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred dollars for the month of January. I understand, but do not have proof, that there is a lease of approximately fifteen years on that building, for which we paid one hundred and forty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred dollars apparently in a month, until such time at the end of a year, or maybe two. If we decide that we are then in a position to purchase that building, we would have an option. I don't know whether that option exists in Waukesha County or not, and I know we have time constraints, but I really hate, like the dickens, to see close to nine hundred thousand dollars dissipated of taxpayer money through that little bit of show for it. Thank you. If I might, I'd like to add a couple of things here. I'd like to read you a letter. I know council has this letter, but I'm going to read it into the public record. This is from Kathy Lomay, the Executive Director of the United Way. It's addressed to myself. Says, "It is a pleasure to recommend the E.S. Atkins location you are considering for the new location of Waukesha County Board of Elections. As a neighboring tenant to this location for the past eight years, I highly endorse this location, as well as the impressive support of E.S. Atkins as a landlord. In terms of location, it's highly visible, easily accessible, well-lit, and very safe. In fact, we have an average of fifty volunteers attending a variety of early morning daytime and evening meetings at our office on a monthly basis, and we've never had a safety issue. As you can see from the parking lots, its also location is well-rented, with financial planning, insurance, staffing, service, and technology businesses. A landlord, E.S. Atkins, is a company that has been strong corporate citizen, and regularly demonstrates their concern for Waukesha County, and has done so for decades. In addition to the president, Mr. Bill Turner, serving as a board member with our local United Way, Mr. Easton Atkins was the United Way Board President in nineteen fifty-nine. Beyond their commitment to the community, their service as a responsive and professional landlord is impeccable. It is true added bonus that the landlord is also on-site. Again, it is my pleasure to recommend your choice of this location, and I look forward to having the Board of Elections as another good neighbor." Moving ahead, regarding, just want to correct a couple of things in terms of the process. Council knows that we just went through our five-year capital improvement plan, and in that five-year capital improvement plan, we've prioritized the county's capital needs, and we spent a great deal of time as a group and a body in doing that. Those capital needs over the next five years are two-hundred-and-two million dollars. Included in that, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight million dollars for schools, twenty-two million dollars for emergency radio system, five million dollars for Warwick Community College, six million dollars for Public Works. That doesn't include thirty-eight million dollars in road backlogs that we have no funding for. I looked through this document, and I saw no place where we, as an executive group or council, felt that taking scarce capital resources and investing in, in a new county building at this juncture made any sense. And I can tell you, looking forward over the next five years with what I think we're going to be looking at in terms of economic conditions, real estate conditions, I still don't see any kind of daylight in that regard. Further, when you go through a bid process, we have a very, very defined and discreet bid process. We went out to bid, we went out to bid with the mandates and specifications that we were provided by Mr. Gutierrez. We went out, we allowed bidders to bid on either leasing or an outright purchase. We evaluated those bids. The only outright purchase bids that we received were ground-up buildings, we would have never gotten Board of Elections in there in time, and were enormously more expensive than what we're talking about. With regard to the comments about the state's Attorney's Office, the hundred and forty-eight-thousand dollars is not a monthly rent, it's a half-years rent. With regard to taking the rent over a ten-year basis and multiplying it by ten, that totally discounts the time value of money. It also assumes that you could build a building of that size at a lower cost. We know from the bids that we received that we can't, because we got no bids that provided the citizens of this county with a lower occupancy cost over the ten-year period. That's what we do. That's the financial analysis that we go through. That's the reason that we landed with this property as being an appropriate property, a property that met state criteria, a property that met Mr. Gutierrez's stated requirements, and one that provides the county taxpayers with the best value for their dollar. Thank you.
Wayne, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Joe. Was there any? Attempt to, attempt to talk to the current owner about staying in the building and possibly building onto that building?
Mr. Cambar.
That's correct.
The concern that we have there, Joe, and it was a very real concern, is that, is that an adequate expansion of that building for the space and size that's needed is really not feasible. As has been stated, Salisbury University has got that site in their crosshairs. My concern was, and has been for the past eighteen months as we went through this, that we wouldn't get caught where we didn't have any space for the Board of Elections at all. And that was a very, very real risk that I felt we would take if we didn't move that to the district.
Well, I talked to Mr. Cambar today. He, he said that Salisbury University has never contacted him. He also said that he didn't want to lose the Board of Elections, and he would be willing to sit with the county and talk about adding on. Can I finish? Let me finish.
Yeah.
That he would like to add on, he would, he would furnish heat and air conditioning and climate control, and, but he would like to have a six-year lease, which I understand were not a one-year lease. So, you know, apparently, in this whole process, nobody from the county Executive's Office has ever contacted the owner of this building.
We went out to bid, Joe. We went out to bid, and it's not true we did contact him. We went out to a competitive bid. If he wanted to do that, why didn't he submit a competitive bid?
He was already in the building. He was told.
No, no, no.
Wait, wait a minute. Let me, he was told.
Have you read the bid?
Yeah, I've read the bid, and he was told that they were just looking for another location. That's what he, that's what he was told. That's why he didn't go after it, so.
I, I, I can't explain why he didn't submit a bid. What I can explain is, is that when the county goes out for a competitive bid, and I'll have Mr. Baker explain this further if you'd like, we go out to competitive bid, we have to receive those bids and score those bids in accordance with county policy. We're not going to have a landlord come back later and say, oh, well, I wish I'd have sent something in. That, that just perils the entire process. Is that, I think that's as much as I knew to.
My name's Johnny Miller, and I'm a lifelong resident here in Waukesha County. And first of all, I personally think that this administration didn't really give you the, the proposal in a way that I would say was transparent. Number one, we know that it's a lot of money, over, I think, eight-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars over a ten-year period, that's sixty-seven-hundred dollars a month, and we also have another facility in there, it's WIC. And I believe, who's paying the WIC the rent? Is that Waukesha County?
The agency is a federal-funded program, but they're housed under the county umbrella, if you will, so it's a federal state.
Well, I may be mistaken, but, and, and, you know, this goes back a ways, but I believe that WIC was, was, that, that lease was brought to Waukesha County and was funded by a previous council. And I, I may be wrong, but I believe that was about five thousand dollars a month for that facility. So if you add the sixty-seven-hundred, you know, the eight-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars is really not the, the bottom line here. We've got a lot of money going in that building, taxpayers' money, and that's my concern on behalf of the taxpayer. The second problem I have with it is, we've got a new county council that's going to be coming in, in November, and I don't want to see that council enjoined by agreements that this council may make that'll hinder them in the performance of their duties. And I know there's other locations. I, let me just give you an alternative. I can come up here, because I have a new dog, I have a new dog in the hunt here. I'm just a taxpayer that'd like to see the average man, to save him a buck. And when you're talking about a million dollars here, you know, it's a lot of money. But we've got the airport industrial park. You say, well, security. Well, we've got the medevac unit, state police-equipped medevac unit right next to it. That property's owned by the county. We have sewer there. Was that included in the bid proposal? Was that included in the bid proposal package that went out to the developers? The second facility, we have an empty hangar next to the US Geological Survey at the airport. Now, it's in disrepair, but it's big, and it's unoccupied. We have the tri-county council building, and I still can't believe, if the county, this county helped fund that, it was funded by USDA money, who negotiated that lease in the comps? And when I look at the comps and I've looked at the review of the comps, I didn't even see the WIC rent in the comparables. So I think it's flawed. And I say, "Build your own facility." I mean, you know, I think it'd be a lot cheaper in the long run, 'cause at the end of 10 years, we're gonna have to look at this thing, and we're gonna be out again. So I say stimulate the economy, put it out on county-owned lands, renovate an existing facility. I've already given you several options here, and to try to stimulate the economy.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Hickman. I'm the Administrative Assistant at the Board of Elections. I am a Wacomico County resident, and I'm glad to speak to you this evening. We talked about the new building that the Board of Elections needs. We've talked about the square footage and those things, but one of the main things that I feel we're overlooking is the location. A couple of weeks ago, I took my time from work. I took off to come to a closed session. I was very appalled by some of the way people spoke to each other and how they considered me little, no consideration for us who work at the election office. I'm concerned for my sector. I've lived here. I know what goes on in Salisbury. I know what's happening in that area. I do not wanna be beat up. I saw one staff member that got hurt because she went to the hospital. I don't wanna be that way. Thank you for listening.
I just wish to ask the council to refer to the brief in page two, line D. It refers to any additional extension of the current lease that is being decided. And it says as follows, "Tenet has the right to renew this lease for three additional five-year terms plus 3% annually. Tenant shall notify landlord of its intent to renew by written notice to landlord 90 days prior to the end of the current term or any renewal term. During said renewal term, all terms and conditions of the original lease will remain in full force, except the rent shall be current annual rent plus 3% increased annually." Now, my math tells me that that's not. I perversely, it's part of the lease.
Good evening. My name's John Palmer. I live in Delmar, Maryland. I heard some specs put out earlier about the election board was going to be getting some new machines that required a substantial amount of paper. And the type of air conditioning that you have in the current building is what they call comfort cooling. It is not sufficient to maintain that paper in the condition that you need it. You are going to need other systems similar to what they call lever systems. They maintain not only the temperature, but the relative humidity and the dry temperatures in that room that you're going to need. These are specialized units. We use them at colleges. They're very expensive, and they're expensive to maintain. Is there anywhere in the lease that's going to say that when these machines come in, who's going to pay for the machines to maintain that paper and equipment the way it needs
Good evening. I'm Woody Willing, member of the board. And the whole thing has been, there's been a lot of he-say, she-say about going in here. The problem is the location. And anybody that's lived in Salisbury, you got two adult bookstores there. You got Motel prostitution. You got a convenience store where a woman was killed two years ago. And I see sandbags around the place, must have a little leak. So now I'm the one that talks about, so it's all the stuff beside, is that the location that Wacomico County wants to put the selection board in? We're what's going on record is saying, "We don't think so." If something happens out there, it's on you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rick Conrad. I'm the Purchasing Director, also a citizen of Salisbury. I just wanted to make a couple of points. One, I did talk to Mr. Cam Barton a couple of different times, mentioned to him about the space issue, almost needing to double the amount of space. Looking at his footprint of the property, they can't really provide adequate parking now, so doubling the amount of space would be difficult. But there was a conversation, Joe, just so you know, it did take place.
I talked to him today, and he said there was no conversation. I will call him back.
Yeah, just talked to him about when we talked about the lease extension and all that, 'cause that's when the conversation took place. The other thing I have in front of me is from 2009, January 2009. This comes from Linda Lamone, who is the Administrator for the State Board of Elections. And Ms. Lamone is talking about the Board of Elections space and the amount of space that they need, the requirements that they need. And I'll just excerpt one paragraph, I'll provide a copy to anyone that wants to see it. Currently, the Wacomico County Board of Elections has 4,400 square feet of office space, and this is dating to 2009, for its employees, files, and office equipment. As you can see from the attached document, the required office space needed is 7,325 square feet, which is significantly greater than what is currently allocated. I hope that your office will work with the Wacomico County Board of Elections to find office space that meets the attached requirements. So that's in 2009. That's what we were told then, as far as the space that's needed to accommodate their staff, their equipment, and everything else, over what they had right now. And right now, what they have also stores all the election equipment and so forth. As far as the issue about the temperature control, nothing was said to us about any special temperature control, but I think that the landlord worked with us to make sure that we accommodate that issue if it needs to be accommodated. So I think that, you know, this process was done fairly, it was done completely. There were a couple of offers that were, you know, buy offers that were put into a couple of the proposals. We didn't feel that those were feasible offers for us, and we didn't feel that we could afford those. So this is what we felt we could afford, this is what we felt would provide these people, these staff, whom I care about too, I'm a county staff worker, with the right facility for them to do their job and serve the people of this county. And I just hope you take all of that into consideration when you guys make your decision. Thank you.
Mr. Conrad, since it appears we're having question and answer now.
Sure.
In the bidding process, I think you, and of course, public awareness, do you have 16 people responding?
I think there were 12 different responses, and there were about 16 different options. If you start, you know, several of them had multiple options.
And this is the one that met the requirements of the bid to the best of the county's?
It's what I would call the best bid. It wasn't the cheapest bid. There was actually one bid that was a lower bid, but this was the best bid.
Now, the tri-county's office building was considered in this?
It was, they did put a bid in.
And it was considerably higher, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. It was, I wanna say around $20 a square foot, but I'm not sure, $21 maybe. But also, Anthony Gutierrez looked at that space, and there were issues about offloading out the back, the back part of that facility, and that wasn't feasible because of loading the machines in and out. And one of the things we liked about the current facility, there's a garage door. It goes up, you get them in and out, there's no big deal about getting those pieces of equipment in and out.
And we talked about that during the work.
Yes, we did.
Somebody asked me a question, did the county look at the county space that it had available and possibly consolidating county services and moving into another county building?
We did, we did. In fact, we even looked at the Goldman Building, which is the old drill academy. Anthony and I brought that up to Anthony early on about it, but it's so far off, out of town, it's over by the airport. Somebody mentioned some facility at the airport. It's too far away, it's too far out of town and off the beaten track. It just wasn't feasible to consider that, that far out of town. We wanted, the idea and the understanding we had about the needs of the Board of Elections was they wanted somewhere near town, near where voters could get to them easily.
And I look at this lease proposal, and I see $7.95 a square foot. Now, this is typically what is paid for warehouse space in our community, isn't it?
It's just slightly higher than what we're paying now.
And 10 years from now, it'll be $10.38 a square foot. And again, we're not even coming close to that $20 a square foot if we had another location similar to the tri-county.
And that amount is still less than all of the offers except, I think, two, that we got on these proposals. That amount, that 10, 10-something. It's closer to one other one, I think, but there's, the only other ones lower than that are the ones that we looked at.
And you can address the safety issues also. Of course, they have the fence that runs completely along the back of the building, and we've gone, a number of us have gone over and looked at the building, we've done a walkthrough with the building and.
It is, it's a razor wire fence.
During the night, during the day. But the razor wire fence not only goes from one end of the property and out to Route 13, but all the way down to Brown Street?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, I think Bill could answer that question.
So that's almost a half a mile of a chain link fence? And while we were touring the property, Mr. Turner, you shared with us that you had never had a break-in in that property, and you had never had anybody assaulted in that property, and the worst thing that you had had happen was, that you heard about, was a homeless person coming in looking for something to eat.
So I don't think, you know, I care about people. I wouldn't put somebody where I think that they would be unsafe. I would be willing to work on that property, no problem. I looked at the crime maps. The crime maps are very similar, where they're at right now, and where they would be in this new facility, and they're a little bit worse here. So, not that I want all of you to think about that when you walk out, out of the door tonight, but it's, but the fact is, none of them are, none of them are that bad. We're, the crime, if you look at the crime maps, they go red to blue, and all the, and green's in the middle, so you got orange and yellow that kill or higher crime, and blue is low. And what you have with this facility, with their facility, and with the new facility, they're all in the blue, blue to green area. So that's lower crime, that's between 1 and 10 incidents, 13 incidents a year, versus a high area of being up between 50 and 100, 200 incidents.
The landlord's willing to put in security cameras and extra additional lighting?
Yes.
Is that at the landlord's cost?
Mm-hmm. And he's also.
Is it indoor and outdoor?
It's outdoor lighting that was concerned.
Cameras, indoor and outdoor?
Yeah.
Landlord's gonna put indoor cameras in also?
I don't know that, indoor cameras weren't part of what we asked for. The outdoors, the main, the main concern, obviously. Thank you. Any other questions?
I was gonna say, while we're speaking about that, I circled that property behind it and threw it several times, including in Danforth the other day. The Austin Cox Building has sandbags in front of it. They are not recent. So what's the story with the water pumps?
Bill talked about that.
Okay, the other, the other piece I have is that back garage door. If you put your back to that door, you face dumpster enclosure, which blocks a direct view from even across the railroad tracks. So there's somebody we're trying to get, I'm gonna say, in through that garage door, it's not that visible. If this lease is approved, maybe that could be moved, because we're interested, number one, in security, and particularly the voting machines. The other piece I was gonna ask, and I didn't get to change it, Katrina had mentioned, Ms. Fernando had mentioned, that the paper is very sensitive. I'm assuming that after the elections, you have to keep certain paper ballots for a certain period of time too.
All paper ballots.
What is the fire, what will be the fire protection for those ballots in that facility? Because I'm assuming you want some sort of fire protection for them, I'd be my guess.
The system is sprinkler right now, but.
Yeah, you have them wet there.
Yeah.
You have the lighting on the wall disappears, so.
What are you doing now?
They don't have paper ballots now, I believe.
So that's not an issue right now?
We do not have paper ballots at this time. The state passed a law to do two paper ballots, so we cannot entertain that question because we don't have it as a process now. So that's what I was talking earlier, when we talk apples and oranges, you must stick apples to apples, oranges to oranges. I can't tell you how it's gonna be. The air conditioning, I went up there, and I walked around there at night so that I could see it. And what I'm saying is the air conditioner is not the air conditioner that gentlemen was talking about up there now.
Well, those were, those were air conditioners. We didn't have any conception that was even, were even needed as far as the RFP when it was done, so.
When Ms. Lamone wrote the letter to you, was in 2009, the law was passed in 2007. The only reason we don't have the machine, the machines yet is for economics. Plus, we had to finish paying for the machines that we're using right now.
Rick, if you take into consideration, I was there today, made a couple trips around the building. I noticed there's probably only 20-foot maybe between the overhead back door and the razor wire fence, and I guess, did you ask Anthony, and I'm sorry to call him Anthony, 'cause I can't pronounce his last name. Very well, very well, Anthony. Did you consider, you know, keeping those machines dry if it's raining? You're gonna need to back a truck up.
Yeah.
Straight up. Now, Anthony, what size truck do you use to move those machines?
Currently, we use a three semis.
A semi?
Not semis, like a moving.
Utility truck, like a 19-foot moving van?
Yes.
Like a moving, like a 19, 20-foot moving.
Yeah, there's not room to back that truck up, straight up to that back, that overhead door.
I'll let, I'll try to talk to that as well.
It's not.
And you can't do it silently, 'cause you're gonna have to take it to drain, you're gonna have a mountain, so.
It's a machine room.
Hi, I'm Bill Turner. I'm the President of E.S. Atkins Company. I'm glad to answer those questions for you. Gail, you asked about the sandbags. And probably most everybody knows that right in front of our two-story building, the state highway, they're in the process of upgrading the storm drains there. Two years ago, that area flooded over onto our property. The only building that flooded from that was the third warehouse, which is at a lower elevation, and that's why there were some sandbags in front of that building. None of the other buildings have ever flooded, ever. And I've been there over 30 years, and to my knowledge, we've been there over 100 years. So, and the state is about a third or halfway through the upgrade of that storm drain to alleviate that problem. I think they're on, somewhere near Isabella, coming through the back way from Hill Street. And that's in process.
Well, they started up like in what Salisbury School were coming down, like they can, they have one.
Yeah, yeah. So that's why the sandbags were in front of that one facility. The third warehouse down. And this building has never flooded. ADT is there, which should be an adjacent, they're a security company. They have cameras in front of their unit. They've been there, off the top of my head, at least seven years. And we've never had a problem with that building or the other three that are on site. So it's at 1/30, it's actually at a slightly lower elevation than the other buildings. They had some that came in a little bit, about two inches in the front. So I do, I can appreciate why that would be a concern. As far as the, any special needs for the paper, I was unaware of that. I think the RFP said that we had to heat and cool it to appropriate human comfort levels, and which is, you know, what any building, if there are special needs, you know, we can sit down and talk about that. But it sounds like it's need for something. Nobody seems to know what the requirements are for that, so, you know, it's, I don't make my living having unhappy tenants. We have very little turnover. The current tenant that's there now is leaving because she bought her own building just down the block. And also, we had, I think I provided in our RFP, three letters of recommendations from existing tenants, and one of those is one of the tenants that had just moved out or just in the process of moving out. And none of them had very had any security concerns. My own office manager, who will be unhappy with me saying this, but she's just a few years probably away from retirement, she's worked there and many times by herself in my office, which is on site. She's never had a problem with any crime issues, being accosted, anything, had the ordinary accosted, anything, how the ordinary you would have in any other situation in Salt Harbor. She feels very safe there working by herself because I'm out the office frequently.
And she's there basically daytime?
Yes, sometimes, some evenings. I know Maria Waller, who was with Holly Staffing, she's the one who's moving out, was in this suite. She provided a letter of recommendation. And she spent many late evenings, as does, as do the United Way people in their office. And also Mortgage Network, Pope Morgan, is there very late at night. She said she had no problem. And I provided, she provided a email, I think, to, as part of our RFP stating she had no problem coming out late at night. We were fully camera on site. And she was very comfortable there. So, you know, I think, I understand their concerns. I'd say by far, the vast majority of employees that work in various businesses on site are female. So I'm very sensitive of that. And in the two-story buildings, probably seventy percent of the people that go to work every day are female. So it's something that, you know, if and when there is ever an issue, we have to address that. So that's, as a landlord and being on site, I realize that's, you know, that's our reputation and we value that quite a bit in the community. So I understand that there are some preconceived ideas about what that site might be like. But if you look at the crime maps, you, crime maps, you'll find that there's, it's probably less crime where they are right now. And from, from the statistical standpoint.
Was there a question about the draw?
Yeah, that, that back was designed, it's a paved area. That was designed to retract trailers. And I know that they had box fans that, that back up to unload. I think that they can back it at an angle and get it up underneath. If that becomes a problem, I'll work something out with Anthony. We'll put a little thing over the top of it, you know, once we know what size vehicles. We can be very flexible about that.
Move the dumpster to the road or something?
Yeah, we could, yeah. That's not a problem. I think what we'll have to do is, is let, you know, I don't know what size trucks they have or whatever, and we'll just, we have to keep them happy as a whole. I realize that. I don't want them coming back and complaining to you all after. And if you agree to lease the property from us, I have to keep them happy, so.
Mr. Turner, of the tenants that you mentioned, are there hours of operation beyond the traditional five o'clock? And I know employees tend to work late because that's just natural when you're working on a project, but are there traditional hours beyond that?
There's a strip center adjacent to this that we also own that's part of the complex. And most of those places stay open late at night. Also, there's, across the, there's a little, I call it an alleyway. It's a drive-through where the trucks are going around on the corner of that warehouse there, which is almost a, you'll be a neighbor. There's a dance studio. They only start dancing till five o'clock at night. And you're talking about girls from ages of three to eighteen to twenty years old that regularly go there during weeknights and on weekends. And they've never complained about it.
What time of night do they, you know?
Well, they start after school and then they can go to like eight o'clock at night, something like that. That's the latest I've seen them there.
So that's the adjacent property, but not in the...
Well, no, it's, 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 it's around the complex. It's a neighbor. They don't physically, it's about like a thirty-foot difference between them. It's the dance studio. And then ADT is there late at night. But I don't know what their normal hours are. But, I mean, obviously, a lot of office space is, you know, eight to five, something like that, but people work late also, including myself on there frequently very late at night, so.
Thank you. If I could, I just wanted to address the future needs of the office regarding the paper ballot based system. It's our understanding that the State Board is waiting for the session, the legislative session to hand. And hopefully sometime in May, they'll put, put out the RFP for a new voting system, paper ballot based voting system, with the hope that the bids will come in and be awarded by December of this year. So we should know at that time what future needs would be for humidity control, et cetera, storage space for ballots. So at this time, we're, we're planning on deploying the touchscreens for the 2014 primary and general election, and then they will be going away according to State Board plan. That's why at this time, we can't tell you until the bid's awarded, what the specs will be for a future system.
Mr. Turner, I have a question for you. Certainly, I'd like to say thank you for being an attendance this evening because as you're probably aware that I was asking for your attendance at the previous meeting. And I know, and you stated that this particular location has met the technical request and everything that was indicated in the RFP. My concern, I guess, and I served in a similar capacity as a director of a facility, how are your, how do you feel about your concerns that you're receiving specifically from your staff?
I appreciate the question. And personally, for my own self, I've, I've come to find that over twenty years of election administrations, best for myself to give my own personal feelings about matters such as these, kind of out of the, the public area. And I'm sure you can understand, wanting to administer elections in a nonpartisan way that serves us well, or serves me well in directing the office. So far as the individuals that work for us, we've already had one individual come up. And then that's the purpose of this public hearing. We have several others that are here in the audience. And I certainly hold to the tenet that everyone should speak for themselves.
Sure. I guess the other piece of that is that I find it really important to know what the concerns are of the staff. And I certainly understand your point as well. But I don't want to see you have five or however many employees in your office vacancies on the county website because of a decision made this evening should it go in the direction. And I know we can't remove all concerns from the individuals, but at the same token, I think those points are valid and those concerns are something that as a leader would, you know, take that into consideration, although it is a political, if you will, concern that you're just sharing with us. But, you know, your department is very important and you have really good people. And I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that that really needs to be taken into consideration.
I do appreciate your comment on that. And I think that reinforces my own personal policy. Regardless of my own personal opinions, I've told Ford on several occasions at our monthly meetings, which are also open to the public, that if they are in favor of me administering the Board of Elections work in this particular location, I'll do my best as their directive to do so. If they choose a different location in their preference, I would, I'd be happy to do that. And of course, recognizing Mr. Pollitt as the, the head of county government, I certainly do defer to him as, as one of his department heads to follow the, the budgetary constraints of the county, et cetera, and policies. But getting back to the question of the, the concerns of the staff, I think you, you hit a very important point in that regardless of my own personal opinions of, of what building I'm working in, the success of the Board of Elections for at least the almost eight years that I've been there, and certainly for longer years than that under, under previous director Judy Ritter, and the word, the name is escaping me right now, but certainly a longstanding tradition in our office, that the staff are the ones who make your elections successful. We have about three hundred citizens across the county who volunteer their time to serve on Election Day. They're the ones who make your elections successful. So again, I do have opinions, of course, which I choose to keep to myself. But the concerns of the staff and the people, the voters who come to our facility, those are very important. I think you make a good point there.
And, and my understanding, what you said correctly, that the state is going to, I guess, mandate the future needs of an election office, and that will not be known until when? December?
What I meant to say was in two thousand and seven, the state law was passed mandating a paper ballot based system to be used in Maryland. Because of budgetary constraints, Governor O'Malley has not been able to, excuse, I shouldn't say that. Governor O'Malley has not put into his budget until last fiscal year and his current fiscal year money to get that process started. So this current fiscal year, we're in the RFP process. They have a project management team also in place to carry that forward. And so again, the, the projection from the State Board of Elections is that hopefully by December of 2014, that bid will be awarded. We will know who the vendor is and we will know what type of equipment, what type of facility needs are to be met. And I think Mr. Baker also spoke to that at the very beginning, that there, there might be something in here for you to consider if the state changes requirements for election office. Whoever gets the, the lease would have to accommodate us or the grounds for termination. I think that was mentioned briefly early on. So yes, we do anticipate a change in the system. At this time, we don't have more information than that.
And where, do you have any clue where that change may be?
Well, we're supposed to go to...
Inivity, possibly?
Yes, certainly. We're gonna be dealing with many more ballots than we are now. Apparently, we use paper ballots for absentee and provisional. But when you go to an optical scan based system where every voter is issued a paper ballot. And there's also legislation in the current session, I believe it's sponsored by the state prosecutor, wanting us to keep our records longer than the required twenty-two month requirement. Since congressional race is always on our two-year cycle of ballots, that makes it a federal and state and local election. And so requirements for record keeping on that is twenty-two months. But I believe the state prosecutor wants us to keep it longer so that their office can have more time to prosecute such things as double voting.
Some of the buildings out there keep their door locks, door lock, doors locked during the day and they have a buzz-in system or code. Are you gonna request that?
Yes, and that's in my letter that I left with Mr. Kramer. Hartford County, Howard County and Queen Anne's County are three local board of elections offices that I've had the opportunity to visit. And they, they all have a similar setup where it's an enclosed area, kind of like a doctor's waiting room area that you, and you get buzzed in for further access to the...
You've never had that where you're at now?
We do not have that.
I think that, that is an important element to consider because I think that's good for any office right now.
Are you talking about something similar like what the schools do?
What the sheriff has over there.
Or what we have here in the building, the back door. You can, can't necessarily get it in the...
I think it's good.
You get it in the lobby.
Office, which I think should be open all the time.
Well, if it would be open, you just walk in. It'd have to be buzzed.
Hi, my name is Jerry Cook and I am the election judge coordinator for the Board of Elections. And you were asking about our opinions on this. There is concern, but we will continue to do our job the best that we can possibly do for the citizens of Wycomica County. Being the election judge coordinator, I am concerned a little bit about our older judges because we do have a lot of them that, you know, retirees are the ones who are able to help us more often than those that work. So there is a little bit of concern on that because they do come on election night late, around ten or eleven o'clock at night. And the past, where we are right now, they stay in their cars and they wait to come and bring their, their supplies back to us. So it would be something that I would just be concerned about as far as them being secure, waiting for if that process was to be used for the building as well. So like I said, there are, there is concern, but as far as our job, we are, we are gonna do it at the, the best of our ability and we're gonna continue to serve the county. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight?
Yes, I would like to say something. My name is Frances Taylor Hickman and I write letters. I am concerned because I've sat here and I've listened to you all talk about building and saving money, which is good. We have to do that. But I'm also concerned about the safety. And I don't like the place that you're working at. There is a ES, I don't know how many people know where this building is, but there's that big ES entrance. In back of it is this little alley with this place that you want to put these workers in. These workers have to work at night sometimes. It isn't safe for them to come out. They may not have somebody walk out with them. And with the crime that is going on in this city, I am, I am scared of it. There's a red light district down there for those people to run in, to see what they can do if you're sitting there at your office. And it's something for you all to think about. There has to be other buildings to go to. You're out here, I think the Board of Elections should be a good place for the people to go to, not back here in an alley. And I am concerned. This is my daughter. And everybody in that office is concerned about where you all want to put her. That's what I have to say. I am ninety years old and I've seen a lot, but I am very concerned. I think as a Board of Elections, you need to get a nice building with windows in it. That building doesn't hardly have a window. So please, think about this. Do you want your wife or your daughter to work there? Think about that.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Dave Humphries. I'm a local contractor in Wycomica County. I spent four years in the Marine Corps. And if you told me I had to go down there after dark and get out of my vehicle, I don't think I'd do it. I've owned property. My mother and I have owned property in that area. And we sold the property. And here's something you need to think about. When it comes to crime, criminals, the law being broken, we're working with a lot more sophisticated and dedicated criminals this day, this day and time. Look at what's going on just during the last week. Shooting state police birds, shootings burning houses. These are out of town. Our crime has done nothing but rise, 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 rise to where it is. It's crazy. Think about this, all right? You're gonna do a ten-year lease, if I understand this right. I kind of came in on the tail end of this thing. All right, so you're saying that there's maps, that maps out crime? Okay, great. If you got mapped out crime and you're in the blue area, well, why do you need a twenty-foot fence behind the building, constant war on top of it? What's that there for?
To keep them working.
All right. Let's talk about a woven wire fence. Also, I ought to put in, I own a very large demolition company. What does it take to get inside a woven wire fence? Takes a screwdriver, a pair of pliers. You bend the wire over at the bottom. You bend the wire over at the top. You pull that one strand of wire out. You open the fence up as wide as you want. That's how secure a woven wire fence is. I'd be willing to bet, and I'm a betting man, I'm a gambling man. I gamble on a lot of things. Business mostly. But I'll bet you right now, if we were to go out there and walk across that parking lot, you'll find syringes. You'll find heroin bags. So I want to stop because this is what I'm gonna say to you. Think about this. I've heard mention of the airport. I've heard mention of other county buildings. I do know quite a bit about this county and how it functions. It owns a lot of land. It owns a lot of buildings. When you're talking ten, twenty, thirty years, what we heard earlier, I think from this gentleman, about equipment, why would we lease equipment? We can keep it for ten years and get our service out of it and buy it. Everybody's like, yeah, mhm, makes sense. Well, if you're gonna spend millions of dollars, keep the millions of dollars in your own pocket. Why are you putting it in somebody else's pocket? This county should be conservative and look out for itself and take care of itself. Because you're gonna be guaranteed two things. The crime is gonna rise. When you have an election and there's a lot of cars up there and you got these sophisticated thieves, a pair of wire cutters puts them on you. They see cars out there, they're gonna rob. That's, that's just plain simple. Now, let me put the bang on you guys. What does a human life work? What does a human life worth? What does somebody being hurt worth? Is that worth money? When you're talking about spending money, what is a life worth? What is your safety worth? I want to tell you something, y'all got something to think about. And I'm pretty good with numbers, too. I didn't get to look at all the numbers on it. I see Mr. Strausberg over here is really fidgeting. And I've heard quite a few things mentioned different places and all this. And I'm sitting behind you every time I hear something mentioned, if it doesn't have to do with Mr. Turner back here, I see you getting agitated and starting to fidget. So I'm going to say this, folks, you need to do some real homework on this, real homework. But I think your best homework would be the safety of your people, and that's not a safety worry. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments? All right, council comments?
I just had one question for Mr. Baker, and I know I brought something. I went with the state attorney's office. I see there is requirements for liability insurance. Is there any flood insurance required, Mr. Baker? For any reason? I just wanted to know if we had to have, well, they had to have the state attorney's office because of the mortgage.
It's not in place.
It's not in place. It's not in place, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I do, yeah. I have some questions on several fronts here. And first of all, I guess perception is 90% of any, any project. And if people don't feel safe, they're not going to feel safe, and they're not going to be safe. So I have a problem with this location based on the workers that are there, and I want to protect everyone, just as someone just said, it's not worth forgiving the slightest mugging, in my opinion. The other part is, is that we're working with a Cadillac taste, and we're on, we're on Chevrolet budget right now. And I have to agree with Mr. Elliott as far as the fact of, if it's going to cost us 900 and some thousand by the first time, why we don't look at building our own building somewhere on some of our own public property that we have. I'm really concerned with the letter that Mr. Holloway had, Joe had, from the election board stating we'd have to have security guards there, or that suggested security guards. I mean, if the state election office is recommending security guards, then I have a problem with the location. I do. And I'd say, my, my first thought is the safety of the people working there, Ms. Hickman and Mrs. Hickman, your mom, I want you to feel safe. And if you feel safe at Bateman Street, I see no reason why we shouldn't talk to Mr. Camborne and see if something can be worked out. I don't know what, if, Rick, if you say it can't be doubled, the size won't fit under footprint, I don't know.
I've got a terrible building now, I don't think they saw what I-
Yeah, I don't know. So I mean, that's something you're going to have to work out with him. But I, I just have a problem, not so much, I think the building, and I know Mr. Turner personally, and I think he'd be a great landlord, I don't have a problem with that. But within our budgetary constraints right now, and the fact that the workers are not feeling safe, I'm going to have to vote no on this.
Any other comments? Oh, I'll make a few. Um, you know, they say when you have a controversial issue, you have to vote no, or you want to vote no, or you can vote yes either way, you need good reasons. I've heard that before from some council members. So, you know, then we're sitting up here taking notes, and the security guard thing bothers me, and it's something that we haven't had to have. I didn't know about, I knew about the temperature and climate control, but I didn't know about the special equipment that we may have to have. And the other thing, if you have, if you're susceptible to having flooding or water sheeping in the business, I guess what I saw today when I went out there is the plumbing contractor, I'm sure that it's not like they had water all around the building, and they couldn't get to the building because water was a foot deep. It looked to me like they'd put sandbags along the front, and off to one side of the door, they probably had water seepage going in. So that's, there's something like that going to happen out there. That's going to be even more problems for our, for our paper ballots, or machines for that matter. There's a dance studio there, Mr. Turner mentioned that, and I know Mr. Turner, and I have the highest respect for Mr. Turner, and I know he's probably not thinking real high of us, me writing about this, but anyway. I met with my accountant this morning, and her dog, her granddaughter, went there, and they have to have a code to punch in. They don't even leave the doors open so people can come and go. So that, that shows me that there's some concerns. I don't think an election office ought to have the doors locked. Now, I'm, I'm sure at some point in time, it's going to get bad enough in this city and county that it's going to have to happen. But it's not happening right now where they're located. And, and the money is a problem. You know, I heard Mr. Roser talk a while ago about equipment, you know, it's not feasible to lease something if we're going to keep it 10 years. And that's a piece of equipment. A piece of equipment don't last nearly as long as a building. So I can't see it feasible, and I know we have leased other properties, we did the state's attorney's office, but we did that with an option buy. And I asked for a list of places that we have leased for longer than 10 years, and there is some that we have, that we have leased, and there's also some that we have leased to people for longer than that. So, you know, almost a million dollars in 10 years, and we end up with, you can say nothing, but we have had use of the office. So, you know, if, if we extended, I just think that the county administrators, you know, the county administrator's office, they need to step back and look at this. I did talk to Mr. Camborne today. When I talked to him, he made no mention, and I asked him that he's been approached. And I understand maybe he should have, if he's seen the RFP in the paper, he should have stepped forward, but he was told that they wanted to move to a different building. I don't know if he was told why, you know? But he told me today that he would be willing to sit with the county and talk about adding on, doing whatever had to be done, but he would have to, naturally, he'd have to have more rent because he's going to make improvements. Maybe we could even buy the building. I mean, I, I'm sure the options are open, but we have more options than what we've got here. I do have a problem with a concern with the employees. And I don't know if there was miscommunication, I'm not going to blame anybody on this, if there was miscommunications from the start about the board not being involved, you know, we've heard several stories, and I know how easy it is. It's like if we each tell somebody a secret, by the time it gets to the end of the end, things have changed, you know? So I don't know exactly where the breakdown there was, but there was a breakdown there. So I'm not going to be able to support this at this time.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
Well, a lot of information tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank Rick Conrad and the executive's office and staff working on this. Is it safe? Well, what I hear is from the employees that they don't feel it's safe. Well, I'm here to tell you, I don't think right now there is any place right now that's safe. I hear of muggings of giant food that women need to be very, very careful. So, you know, that can be really debated. Is it adequate? Um, I've gotten a couple surprises here tonight that we don't know if it's adequate. Not anyone's fault, but, you know, with the new guidelines of the future needs from the state coming down, we really don't know that. Is it secure? I would be concerned about the security when no one is there, that somebody could break in over there. And I know Mr. Turner, you know, runs a good place over there. As a matter of fact, I have an, I had an employee in my business who is now over there. She is the owner of the dance, foot dance, the studio. And I think, I believe she's been there since about 2000, Kelly Taylor. And I can tell you, if she's had problems over there, my phone would have been ringing off the books, so she has not really had problems. But, you know, perception is reality. I, you know, I am concerned about, you know, the adequacy there and it being secure when no one's there and the safety. But I, I don't think I can support this right now. I do believe the process was not flawed. I do believe that there were some miscommunications or lack of communications as to the future needs, and, and that's hard to even articulate because, you know, you don't even know what the future needs are yet. So, you know, it, it just is, it is not good. I have heard that, you know, the state's attorney's office is a great office. Well, I can tell you right now, the county cannot give the state's attorney, you know, a building like the state's attorney's office. We do not have the funds. So hopefully, you know, there can be a stopgap somewhere and come to some terms if the council doesn't support this, that we can make it a little bit better. So for that reason, I cannot support this.
Mr. President, I'm willing to just give my comments. I would like to say I'm happy to see that we have a more civilized discussion this evening. Two weeks ago, in my opinion, it was not, and I felt like it was a lot of disrespect and activity going on. And I think that in a county, as we're us, or we at least want to be respectful and have a discussion that can either, you know, can get us to an end, whether it's you're agreeing with it or you don't. So to that end, I am pleased to see that we did have a respectful discussion. The other piece of this, I'd like to say, Mr. Turner, I certainly believe that you are a good landlord, and your businesses in their complex have been successful and will continue to be successful. My concern has been, will be, until probably I leave this council forever, but the human capital, I've always had a concern with that. When we went to the bond market some years ago, that was something that I spoke on and just said that, you know, our, our employees, our people are the root and the core of what runs this county. Buildings, sure, the structures are important, locations are important, but I do believe that employees are more important. That's certainly not to say that I'm oblivious to anything, that crime is, is not everywhere because it is. Just on yesterday, I have another meeting with the clergy and all law enforcement in Wycomica County, because it has gotten to the point where it is a concern, and it should have been discussed many, many years ago. But I say all this to say that I'm seeing it from two perspectives. One, I was a county employee, and the facility, agency I worked for was the local management board, and within the past 10 years, that facility has moved three times. So I see that there is a need for us to look at this holistically and, you know, look at the agencies that are in need of space and group them together and have something, define space that we already own, or really just look at it holistically and stop having several leased facilities. The other piece, I've also participated in the tri-county council building. Citizens are probably not pleased about the location because it is a little far out. But what I can say about that process was that the employees were a part of it, the board members were a part of it, we walked through the facility, we heard everybody. And while we did not get a 100% enthusiasm from everybody, but we were respectful when we got to the end of a successful facility at a reasonable cost. So this evening, I cannot support what is before us this evening because I want to look at all factors and look at holistically. I do understand that we are on a timeline, but I don't believe that just a timeline, we should make haste decisions, and I'm not in a position to make a haste decision. So I'm voting against this this evening.
Would you like to continue again this way, since I didn't have to go first?
Sure.
Thank you very much. First, I want to say thank you to everybody who's been involved in this process. I know it's a lot of time, it's a lot of commitment, the future, everything that I've seen you do, I know you do a great job at, but I do have several concerns about this. That's why I've been there about three times looking at it. One, obviously, is safety and security. And also appears that there are going to be changes coming down from the state about the needs of our board of election. And I hate to see us getting tied into an expensive 10-year lease when we don't really need it, know at this point what our needs might actually be with the new, with the new ballots and what's going to be required and what we're going to have to do for that. But personally, I, you know, as I've gotten older, and I know, no offense to everybody who's getting older, but I know a lot of year election people are retired, as you said, they are older. I'm getting nervous about going into areas of this community at night by myself, and I'm not sure I would even go there at night by myself. So I can understand, you know, your concerns, and when we leave here at night, we have Scotty downstairs, we make sure all the females, you know, are walked out to their cars by Scotty or by another gentleman for, for security. And our parking lot is lit, there are very few cars there on the main road, but still you never know what might happen. So I'm, I'm not going to support this right now. I did run by and look at several of the other locations, the Cold Circle, the Edgemore, rode out by there. I've been by Mr. Camborne once again, and I've been, been involved in the central committee, been out of that office for many, many times. I have a concern that it won't meet their needs, and I think that eventually we're going to have to look for something, but right now, I don't think this is quite the right place.
Well, it doesn't have enough votes to carry right now. So what I have to say is just my personal opinion. We looked at the numbers here, and the county looked at the numbers, and the numbers are fair, and the numbers are accurate, and the numbers are right. We don't have a million dollars, we don't have $2 million, we don't have $3 million to build a building. And we can put it on the taxpayers' back, but I don't think that's what we want to do. At $795, it's a fair rate for per square foot for a building. It's more than fair. You can't, we'll have, we'll be hard-pressed to find another building at that rate. And 10 years down the road, at $10.38 a square foot, it'll still be extremely fair. Maybe we'll have an opportunity then, the economy will be better, and we'll be able to build a new building. More options, more options, more options, more options. We, we have an RFP, we have a process that we go through, the process is vetted, we have public hearings, public hearings are usually more than employees. But thank you very much, Mr. Humphries, for expressing your opinion also, and Ms. Palmer and Ms. Miller. But I, I think that, and of course, Mr. Elliott. But I think when, when you go into safety, the concerns have been addressed. I know I'll never be able to leave my door open in my home again and leave it unlocked. I, I know that it's not going to happen. I wish I could. I've lived here a long time also, Ms. Hickman, and I know I can't leave my door unlocked ever again. I can't walk my neighborhood ever again. It's not going to happen. We're going to have to find a, a place that's going to be worthwhile for everybody to be in. As far as election changes, there are going to be election changes next year, and the one after that, and the one after that. And I think you know that, Mr. Baker. And, and we're going to see some other election changes that will affect us, that will add additional cost as we go further down the road. They might not be in effect now because they're not funded, so they'll fund them next year, and then they'll put something else into effect that'll cost us more money. So we know that's going to happen also. You know, I would like to say I could support this at this time, but with the majority of the council already saying no, there's no sense in me saying I could support it, so I can't support it either then.
Well, I hate when the what-ifs get in the way of a good decision, and I feel like that's what's happened here on the council tonight. I felt like the space had good expandability, you know, that was, we could grow into what we needed, temperature control, which is what the state required. The bid process was fair and followed correctly, and in my view, that's what we were voting on tonight. So I know the vote's not going to go the way I want it to, but I'm disappointed. So with that, let's see, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed?
Motion second for what? To-
To approve the-
Adopted the lease.
Approve the lease. That's the motion on the floor.
So all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? And the president votes aye. And the motion fails.
Yeah, no, we're done. Well, we're not done, we need it. What's Johnny Miller doing at the table? Damn. Try to flip across. Matt, are you going to continue?
My math's not that bad, quite frankly. I have 40 years in retail, although I'm also a former, for many, many years, chief judge. I see both sides of this.
We need a spot.
We need a spot.
I can get emotional.
Okay, that's time for our public comments. Does anybody have comments they'd like to share? Okay, all right, council comments?
Just a couple of things coming up this weekend. Fruitland has their Easter parade at 10 o'clock, starting at the low school. The low school will be right about. Plow Days is this weekend also, up on Mount Emano, that starts at 10 o'clock, I believe, also. I think that's at Little League for down at Fruitland. It's opening day is the 12th of April.
The next weekend.
That's at 8:45, I believe, stretch of the firehouse. Just a couple weekends coming up.
Just like to kind of elaborate just a little bit more on the comment I made a while ago with regards to the clergy and law enforcement and representation that was at the meeting yesterday held at St. Paul. Amizon on Delaware Avenue was the city, the county, the state, and then the city of Fruitland. Your chief was in attendance. The reason for the meeting is, was I was seeing earlier, was that a lot of crime has occurred over the past couple of weeks and months and so on and so forth. And the faith-based community is wanting to work with law enforcement. And it's a cohesive effort, it's an opportunity for persons who attend church or be in a congregation to hear that information one-on-one from their law enforcement. There will be a community meeting or community forum that will follow in the month of April. And at the next council meeting, I will certainly give you the specific date. But I thought the meeting was productive and I look forward to working with them in more endeavors. The other item, just like to say, a couple of us went to the Board of Education, to the Department of Transportation Office last week and was able to participate in their Zonar system with regards to the GPS on the school buses as we were looking to possibly put those on the public works equipment. And I felt as though that was a great opportunity for us as council members to see firsthand how things operate and just have a better understanding of what we do prior to making decisions. So I do thank the Transportation Office for their hospitality. And then lastly, there's a hamper and Easter parade on Saturday. And I believe that takes place at noon, so I hope to see you in the area.
Well, today reminded me of why I voted for night meetings. I hated to get off the tractor and come to this meeting that was suddenly sound. In fact, I called Mr. Kramer and asked him if we could cancel it, but it got cloudy outside. But, and the other thing, the folks got to come out tonight. They didn't have to take off work, but they got to come out tonight and express their opinions. And, you know, this has probably been one of the more controversial votes that we've had in a while. I don't think that we're any worse aware for it. You know, everybody got to speak and say what they, what they felt. And I think the Executive's Office will go back with even more ambition and see what they can find to, to bring back to us. I know Anthony's been involved in this and he'll, he'll direct them in the right way. I'm sure he will, he's done a good job for everything else he's done in the county. So I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. And that's all I got for tonight, thank you.
Is there anybody else?
I'm good.
You voted for night meetings for a personal reason?
No, for the folks that wanted to come out.
That's not what you just said, Mr. Palmer. I had to do that.
You know, it's interesting, I was just having this conversation on night meetings yesterday.
You want to do them twice a month now?
Right, yeah. Well, we're talking about the validity and if they, we should still do them and...
That should be up to the next council, twice a month.
Well, it was, you know, a lot of times, it's Mary Shanti seems to be the only one that comes out at night. But Joe, you're correct, this is a, it's a good example of why not. Good opportunity for these people. I'm not sure we would have had the turnout. It's been on track to the death. Can I have a motion to...
Excuse me, Matt, I'm sorry, I'll come back. You mentioned Mary Shanti. And I want to go ahead and thank her and the NAACP for hosting that forum this past week of candidates that are running for the executive position and the council offices. So it was nice, they did a great job at the Chipmunks Cultural Center, so I appreciate that. Thanks for mentioning her.
Matt, to answer your question, she would be here, but she indicated that she had a procedure yesterday and so she wouldn't be in the sentence, but I'm sure she's watching. She's a very committed citizen to what goes on in government.
All right, so can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting and move into closed work session with Lowell, with the consult with her?
So move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.